Please stand and join Councilman Taylor in our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hiding behind people.
Are you calling me short?
Yeah, no.
Let us pray. Holy God, we give you thanks for the city of Guthrie. We thank you for its citizens, its staff, its employees, all of its workers and its leaders. As you keep watch over our hearts and minds, please guide and direct the actions of each person here tonight. May your grace and mercy shine throughout this meeting into our community and beyond. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen, thank you. All right. All this, I call this regular meeting to order Tuesday, June 17th, 2025. Item number two is public comments. We have none unless it's hiding somewhere in these. Okay, thank you. Item number three consent agenda. We might entertain moving the consent agenda until after item number five because something in the consent agenda might pertain to item number five. Is everybody okay with moving the consent agenda or delaying it?
I'm good with it.
Okay.
I don't mind moving it either.
Can I entertain a motion?
Second.
First and a second. Just no more comments or questions, please cast your votes.
All votes are in.
Our unanimous approval from all those present. Item number four items removed, we didn't really remove them, we just delayed it. Item number five retail strategies presentation, presentation and update from Realtor Strategies, Shonda Rooney.
Yes, so as you all know, Retail Strategies is the organization that we have partnered with to do retail recruitment on our behalf. So Cam and Stephen are here to do a presentation, an annual update to let you know what they have been working on.
Thank you, Shonda. Good evening, Council, Mayor. I hope everyone's doing well this evening. So always love to be back in Guthrie, beautiful city. We drove around town today just recataloging our properties, kind of part of our process, process of what we do. Anytime we come to the community to assess the opportunities we have here. So today I got a short presentation, we're going to go through this, feel free to ask questions. I probably prefer them the after, after the end of presentation, so let's get started. So some new faces here I've seen, if you don't know me, I'm Cam South, I'm Senior Portfolio Director at Retail Strategies. Stephen Dandy, he's our Retail Development Associate for our territory. I cover the state of Oklahoma, including you guys here at Guthrie. But we have extended leadership team that's here to support us through out of all of our work and our team here that take care of you guys, including our marketing. So let's look at this as a rewind, rewind one year of when we got into this partnership with you, with you. We want to look at the bases that we're covering here. So we also want to look at year one is understanding your community, knowing the opportunities here. We do a deep dive into the data, a deep dive into the properties that are available for us to go after, to recruit to, and to highlight and emphasize to retailers. So first 90 days, we call it the discovery phase. I like to extend that discovery phases the entire year because we learn every new stuff every single day as we work in the community. But you know, we're covering the bare minimums, you know, the data. We're looking at your cycle graphics, we're looking at traffic patterns, many things that, you know, retailer is going to look at when they come and visit and tour your community. That's including the data analysis that I just mentioned. Boots on the ground, that's when Steve and I physically came to the market and Clay's not here. Where we toured your market, we took drone shots of properties, talked with property owners while we're in the market. We're cataloging, you know, site size, traffic patterns, is this the right egress ingress for certain retailers? So essentially we're putting our, we're taking our consultant hats off, we're putting our retailer hats on and trying to look at your community through their lens. Day 60 to 90 mark, we create a custom void analysis. We curate that down to retailers that will make sense to, that will work in, you know, a trade area as well as commuting like Guthrie. So we curate that down. We start that initial outreach to those retailers to understand, hey, is this an opportunity? Is there a franchisee available? Do you need new construction? You know, do you need second gen space in the community? So we learn a lot in that first 60 to 90 days of understanding, you know, the community, the retailer interests, the brands, and that will make sense for the community. Day 90 to 100, we deliver something called a recruitment plan. The recruitment plan is something similar to like a comprehensive plan, but nowhere near as detailed and as long and where the cost behind that. But we deliver the recruitment plan, just highlighting everything from day one in the partnership to the day 90 mark. So covering all the bases again, so you can have a playbook of understanding your community from what a retailer look like and from what a consultant like us are looking at your community through our eyes as. And from day 90 onward, that's just active recruitment. That's Stephen, you know, calling his contacts, calling property owners, reaching out to retailers, forming those relationships, going to trade shows, just filling out as much as he possibly can and highlighting the community to, so that retailer can understand you a little bit better. Let me go back one, and this is one of, this is one of the many tools we use on the right side. That's your marketing flyer, or we call it a city flyer. It's just the bare bones highlights of what a retailer wants to look at. You know, we can send them a 50-page data study of understanding one certain site. They're not going to look at it, you know, they want to get to the nitty gritty and understand what we're sending them. So we curate that to certain opportunities that we're, we're reaching out to on behalf of you guys. So just a little data piece here. You know, you, you look at, when you type Guthrie in, you know, on Google, you see your little squiggling line there that shows your city boundaries. But you know, retailers are not looking at it like that. You know, they're looking at it from very particular set points, that's five minutes, 10 minute, 15 minute drive races, 3, 5, 10 mile, mile races. They're looking at it from median household income. So many different type of data sets of study areas that, you know, they won't look at because every retailer has a certain type of requirement to enter the market depending on that consumer. And one thing we're going to go cover here, we're going to cover the trade area here shortly, but keep in mind 70%, 7% of your core consumer. So our process, again, starting with the data and the prospects, you know, run, running those drive times, those radius rings. We use something called mobile data tracking or geo fence. In short, and you can see an example of that there on top right image, has the darker colors are showing you where those consumers are coming in at this certain dot here, and I think we ran this here on the Walmart. And, excuse me. And when we draw this line out, we're, we're consuming, you know, what the data is showing us and showing us on the geo fence of the consumers. So anytime you have your phone out and you go inside of Walmart or wherever and it asks you, like, hey, here's a deal for today. Or it, it says, hey, you want to use the store mode, that's geo fencing, it's pinging your phone. And it's counting you as a consumer coming into that store. It's going over so many different things, like the dwell time you spend in the store. If you use the app, it's going over certain products you're purchasing. And we buy this data or demographers that we work with buy that data to understand you a little bit better. So, and we're able to draw this through that data. So your current CTA, and this is your customized trade area, that line that you saw that we have drawn out. Again, that's overlaying multiple retailers, shopping centers to, again, create that custom trade area or that consumer trade area. We want to make Guthrie look, you know, as, you know, as retail focused as possible. Again, you know, that number is bigger than what you see in your city limits. That's again, your core consumer is bigger than your city limits. We want to highlight that and broadcast that out to, to retailers. One thing that we always bring to attention is the opportunity gap. There's a couple of other ways we can go after this, but your opportunity gap is your leakage, meaning that this is the amount of dollars that are leaving your community, being spent in certain different categories that could be spent or retained here in the community. So our efforts go after that dollar amount in those certain categories. So Stevens, you know, reaching out to whether it's a home and garden or clothing or food and beverage, hospitality. Wherever that gap is covering or those gaps are covering, we, we chase after those tenants. And you can kind of see here, it's probably not visible really good, but you can see your different gaps or your leakage. Again, to some of the bread and butter stuff, so over, over this first year, you know, Stephen has done a really good job making huge impact here on the community. You know, putting you guys in front of a ton of people from brokers, developers, tenant rep brokers, real estate managers. You know, he's going to retail shows such as ICSC Vegas, ICSC Red River and presenting your market to them, presenting possible sites. You know, he's connecting these property owners and landlords to these guys that were out at the show. He's bringing insights with him to, to explain it. But outside of the show, you know, we want to utilize those contacts we already have here in the state. You know, that's the, the bread and butter of really anything in commercial real estate is relationship based and trust based relationships. So, you know, we want to understand, you know, if this retailer can work in this community. And that usually starts with working with that tenant rep broker in the community. You can see the different prospects that we have reached out to over the past year, a lot with interest. We're going to get into like kind of how we can place this and kind of challenges here soon. But multitude of different categories and different brands that we're chasing. So I want to keep this in mind and everyone's back of everyone's mind. 18, 36 months is on average of what it takes from opening and closing. It starts at the investor, the stakeholder, you know, of shareholders of, of these companies, all the way to developer getting the doors open and timeline with that. So there's a lot in between. Everything from that real estate director identifying the community as a possible play for store expansion, that retail, I'm sorry, that real estate director has so many stores he has to get open. So he has to rely on those tenant rep brokers that know your market more locally and the relationships that we have with those brokers. Identifying sites, you know, they, they want to get as many sites as possible to make sense for a new store creation or new store opening. But they're also, you know, taking a very fine tooth comb to each site we present. They want to strike it out as much as possible to vet out all the bad sites. So that's usually around the nine to nine month to a year. Real estate committee gets involved after they've selected the first initial round of sites. They want to understand the performer, you know, does this make financial sense? Retail is not going to go anywhere unless it makes some money, that's just the way that works in their world. So again, that goes all the way back to that shareholder that's investing in this company. If there's interest that goes to LOI, you know, this is very, this is the very beginning and the very promising part of, that we usually get the feedback from, from the retailers. It's like, hey, we submitted LOI to this property owner, to this person or this broker that's working this site. And they give us their initial feedback. From there, it goes back to real estate committee to understand like, hey, again, is there any leasing issues, any building issues? There's whatever issue that could possibly come up in between that time from performer to that community meeting. If it strikes through, it goes to lease or purchase sales agreement with that retailer. They source their developer, nine to 10, the national brands have their preferred developer already lined up so they can make their transition into the market a little bit smoother. And that's used around the year three. So on the retail recruitment side, on just on a higher level of what we're doing here, we talked about trade shows here a little bit. We attended all these shows this year, including some more. You know, Vegas is kind of like the Super Bowl show, if you're familiar with that. If you're familiar with that show, it used to be called Recon. This is where we're scrambling, you have an entire team out there working on your behalf, submitting sites, showing sites, following up with those, those communications we had since day one of the partnership. Again, this is an opportunity for us too to, to follow up pre-show. A lot of times these, these retailers don't, you know, they don't know your market. We're here, we got that 30-minute window to talk to them about your market and want to kind of give them the elevator pitch of the reason why they want to be in the community. After that, again, you know, more follow-up after the show, get that interest going, affirm up the interest and report that to you guys. Again, you know, it's heavy here on the conference, on the conference, we have, again, an excellent year last year and to this year of, of these shows here. Our company attended about 15-plus shows all across the country. Our team, the Midwest team, which Stephen and I, we've attended three to four shows over the past year that is directly related to Guthrie. Again, ongoing efforts, some of the challenges, you know. If you don't understand real estate, just bear with me, but you know, retailers want to find an A-plus site. They don't have that A-plus site, they're not going to be as intrigued and as willing to get a store done. So again, what Stephen and I are doing, we're trying to understand, you know, what requirements they need, where can we place them, what are our opportunities? What are not our opportunities? Here's a way if we can shift or have another opportunity put in front of them that may not fit their criteria to get that feedback. One of the other efforts or one of the other things that I've been running to, especially with quick service restaurants, is having a franchisee. If you don't have a franchisee, a retailer is never going to come until there's an operator that has those rights to this area to get them involved. So a lot of feedback we have from, especially on the restaurant side is, yeah, we'd love to be there, but we need a franchisee. So we're not in the headhunting business, so that's where we have to rely a lot on our relationships with these franchisee development brokers and also calling up, hey, there may be a store that's, you know, in Edmen or somewhere else in OKC Metro where we can, you know, tap on that franchisee's shoulder and kind of tell them the story here, try to get them interested in the community. On property information, you know, if you have any owners you'd like for us to talk to, Shonda and Eddie's been great on connecting us with property owners, which is leading to a lot of great conversations and some forward path for us to get things going. And we also open, you know, taking, you know, going after brands that sometime not, may not fit the vision, you know, of Guthrie, just to get the feedback for you guys. So worst thing they can tell us is no, but you know, we want to tell you the reason why they said no. Like what is, what was it, was it the site, was it, you know, the cycle graphics, was it demographics, what's the reason why? So again, you know, we strike a lot of those out off the initial first round of outreach. And we also go after those new to market retailers that may not be in OKC Metro, but that says, hey, you know, we met, met them at Red River, excuse me. We met them at Red River and say, hey, you know, I've always wanted to be in the OKC Metro, I always wanted to be in Guthrie, find me a site. So there's different, different opportunities for us to go after, but there are, again, those hurdles that are in place that we sometime can't get over immediately and it takes a little bit more time and creativity to get over. So questions, this would be the best time to get those answered.
When you say you're speaking to franchises and business owners and landowners, you're, are you making those agreements? Are you, are you the one arranging an agreement for a landowner, property owner to sell their property to a given franchise or something? Is that you doing that?
We don't, excuse me, my voice is going, been doing a lot of talking today. We don't transact the deal, we're simply the matchmaker. Think of us like the match.com of retail and real estate. So Stephen will call, you know, he make his outreach to the property owner, you know, get a list of items like how big is the site? You know, if they have a lease rate, if they want to sell it. And he curates that and puts it into the retailers, puts it in front of retailers for them to understand, hey, here's an opportunity for you based off what, you know, you need to enter a market, we think this is a great fit, great opportunity for you. If you would like to know more, let me know and I'll get you connected, you know, with this landlord or this property owner. So we don't transact that, we're not brokers here to broker deals, we're here to consult on the landlord side, municipal side. But you know, there's certain hurdles in that that we get, you know, may have, it might be the best piece of property in town and they don't want to sell. You know, so there's only so much we can do with that, you know, applying pressure. Eventually, you know, time gets to it, there's a very famous saying, time kills deals, or sometimes time's open up deals. So sometimes we have to wait, but we don't transact deals, we just match them together.
Thank you. Anyone else have any other questions or comments?
I do, so in your gap analysis, you provided some leakage based on a trade area. Where did you all find that data? It looked like, and I'm only asking because here, you know, and what, unless you go up to Stillwater, you go to Oklahoma City and Edmund, you know, we don't really have a place other than Edmund or sporting goods or hobby stores, you know. So we have to go outside of that, so that variable was really small. So to me, that market is a lot larger than what you showed us here today. So you know, for that leakage, it really is a lot larger and that sort of franchise would be very advantageous here. Especially here, Langston not being very far away and also a large sports school as well. And as well as neighboring communities here that come to Guthrie, even just from Walmart, would also benefit from a franchise there. So, you know, I also didn't know if you guys pulled any of this data maybe from locals here to see what sort of franchises they were looking at as well.
Yeah, so to answer the first part of that, that question, you know, it, there's a, there's a couple of variables or a few variables that come into play. Again, you know, when we, we talk about that consumer trade area, we're looking at that corresponding percent of that as well as those numbers are relating to that corresponding percent of the consumer. So yes, there is a leakage for sporting goods. Here's the caveat of this is, you know, these sporting goods boxes are usually large, you know, 30,000 plus square foot of space. In today's market, new construction for these guys that pay market rate rents or below market rate rents. It's kind of tough for developers that, hey, I can pencil this out for you and you can cut a deal here. It's just ever since pre-COVID, it's just price construction, inflation, you know, it's making it hesitant for new construction. And other challenges that we're up against here, especially topography and having a 30-acre site that's flat and has utilities, that has everything to it. Makes it a little bit tough, so it takes a little bit more time and coordination, more on the public-private partnership to get these brands in, which we've already got the ball rolling for a lot of this. So I would love to have a sporting goods opportunity coming into place here, I think it's definitely needed in this community, especially on outreach of the consumer trade area that Guthrie expands out to, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Any more questions, Shonda?
I still have questions to you.
Okay.
Well, we knew going into this it was going to be a multi-year deal, so I'm going to make a motion to approve the next year.
I think it's on the consent agenda.
Is it on the consent?
It's on the consent. Okay. Yeah, we'll, we'll do that next, okay. Well, I'd like to thank Retail Strategies for coming today, thank you so much.
Thank you, Council, Mayor, thank you, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, let's do item number three then, consent agenda, items A through E. Anybody want to make a motion or do you want me to read them all?
Motion to approve is written?
No, don't read them. I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second, any further questions or comments? If not, please cast your votes.
All votes are in.
Okay, all right, unanimous approval for the consent agenda. Item number six, Crossland Construction Agreement, Pocket Park Project. Shonda Rooney, I'll let you describe this.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. We received a bid from Crossland Construction that came in under budget for the completion of our Pocket Park Project. We did receive an additional bid just to ensure that we were getting the best price, but here we are. If y'all have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Are they ready to start? Can we prove this?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions for Shonda?
I'll make the motion to prove this.
Okay, we got a motion, there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, no further questions or comments, please cast your votes.
All votes are in.
Unanimous approval for the Crossland Construction Agreement, Pocket Park Project, thank you, Shonda. Item number seven, 201 North 13th Street Special Use Permit, this, I'm going to read this one. Discussion, consideration and possible action to approve or approve with conditions, amend or deny an existing special use permit to eliminate condition number four, which states no receptions, meetings, parties, et cetera, allowed for a bed and breakfast within the R1 Single Family Dwelling District for a property located at 201 North 13th Street per PC application 24-011 or 011. Mr. Casey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Yeah, I'm just going to add that this was continued from the last meeting, so it was continued from the June 3rd City Council meeting. The council directed staff to determine The council directed staff to determine a maximum occupancy for the structure. So, with all the available information we had, staff determined that the maximum occupancy is twenty-eight people. So, I'll just say what the mayor had said, the request is still for the elimination of condition four. So, if you have any questions, I mean.
So, I'm going to make a motion to approve originally what planning kicked back, which I believe that what this is eliminates, there's no exceptions in it.
That's correct, that condition, right.
My second?
Yeah.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Is there any questions or comments on this?
So, this removes all restrictions, period?
Yes.
Well, I will make a comment, and I said it in the last meeting. I don't know the understanding that the receptions or meetings for guests that are staying there, that's up for interpretation or what? Dan?
It would be, no, as indicated, that they would be able to have any, you know, type of meetings or that inside. It would not allow for any outdoor activities, but if they wanted to have the Girl Scouts there or garden group there for a meeting book club, that would be allowed. It just would not include any of it to be outdoors. So, no large receptions or that outdoors.
Where does it say that?
Say what?
The outdoors, no outdoors.
That's in the, well, it's in the current code. Yeah. And it's basically how it's defined, because a traditional bed and breakfast doesn't have those activities. It's all usually inclusive indoors. Because I think if you remember, we talked that at the last meeting, we have group reception center, and that's where it allows for those outdoor activities to happen, whether it's a, like, for wedding receptions or, you know, large parties on a regular basis. We have one of those off of Forest Hills. I think it was two, three years ago, they got approved with that use. So, that's where that would come into play if they would want to do that.
Well, since these are my constituents, and I did ask all the questions I could piece together in our last meeting with this, I do want to say that it's not the council's place to regulate or business. That's the zoning commission's job. So, there's no parking restrictions here? The street's open for anybody to use?
No, that's correct, because as we talked previously, it would just be the off-site parking that they have to provide.
Right. So, under this new zoning, they're free to park. I guess at this point, what I want to state to those who are constituents that came and those who look to me to stand up for them, and I believe I did, is that under the current zoning laws, there's really, there's just really not much can be done to fix their problem for parking. So, we're relying on the owner to do what he said and be a good steward and be a good neighbor. And as they repeated many times, that this is not built for large events. So, it's really left to that, I guess. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Any more questions, comments?
I did want to comment that I did go back and read through Z's letters, and I did go out to Mr. Martindale's property, and I did review the records. And there were questions, even for him and the other property owners out there as to the alleyway in the easement, it had been vacated. So, that is additional parking space along there as well. It's ten by twenty-four feet long, and that does allow for additional parking outside of the parking he can provide there. And he does have ample parking, and I did go out there, and I did assess it after the last meeting, so.
Okay, great. So, you've got a motion in a second? A motion in a second. Anybody else? Okay. No further comments or questions? Please cast your votes.
All votes ready?
Okay, let's see. All right, unanimous approval for 201 North Thirteenth Street Special Use Permit. Okay. Item number eight, Appointment to the Historic Preservation Commission. Discussion, consideration, and possible action to confirm the mayor's nomination to appoint Lisa Kennedy under an ownership position to the Guthrie Historic Preservation Commission to fill an expired term through March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-eight. Mr. Casey?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Yeah, the one thing I wanted to add on this is, as you see, the candidate lives outside the city limits. In the resolution in two thousand twenty that was done, it allowed for exceptions to any of the requirements, as long as there's a five-sevenths vote of the council. We have two ownership positions currently open. One has been open since, I forget, late last year. We have not been able to get any applicants to submit, so we've had, we've had issue, obviously, trying to fill that. So, with that, if you do go with the applicant, it would require five votes of the council in order to appoint. Because even five-sixths is still, I think, eighty-three, like, percent, but four-sixths is going to put you under the seventy-one percent. So, it still requires five votes.
Interesting. Okay.
And she has a business in town?
Oh, yeah, I should, yeah, they own a building in town. So, she fits the criteria for the slot on the Historic Preservation Commission, because they're the ownership of a building. They just don't live in the city limits.
They own the Crest.
Two buildings, yeah. They own the Crest Building and then the building that is, gosh, I forget the name, but it had Cinnanola in it recently, and then Stacy's before that. Yep.
I thought it was four, but there are two buildings with.
Yeah, yeah, like, yeah, yeah. It's kind of separate, but, yeah, yeah. Yeah, you're right. I think it may be still four parcels, but, yeah, it kind of functioned.
Four storefronts, but two buildings, yeah.
Yeah.
Any questions, comments for Dan?
I'll make the motion to approve her.
Second.
Motion in a second. Questions or comments? Let's cast our votes.
All votes ready?
Perfect, thank you.
Unanimous approval to appoint Lisa Kennedy to the Historic Preservation Commission. Thank you, Dan. Item number nine, Appointment to Vacate Ward One Council and GP W.A. Trustee Seat. This is the discussion, consideration, and possible action to interview and appoint an individual effective June seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five, to fill the vacant Ward One City Council and Guthrie Public Works Authority trustee position for the balance of the current term ending in May, two thousand twenty-seven. Per tradition in this appointment, we always have four people and one person withdraws recently before we go. So, we don't have four, we have three, which would be Franklin Danley, Deanna Dunning, and Ed Wood. I think all three of them are here. See, okay, there we are, great. So, the way this will work, I jokingly call it American Idol. The reason why I call it that is because each person goes up to the podium, will answer questions in front of everybody, and this is obviously televised and put out on the web. What we will do is kindly ask the two that is not being interviewed to step into the other room. That way, they cannot hear the answers and then copy and repeat. And then we'll trade that out, correct? Yes, sir. Okay, all right. So, if, I'm just going to go off the list here in order with Franklin Danley. So, I'll ask Deanna Dunning and Ed Wood, if you'd please follow Mr. Casey here. All right. And I was thinking about starting out here, looking your way down, but I don't really know if that's necessary, per se. I think if anybody just has a question and would like to start, they can, unless, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's appropriate. Mayor, I would think with the format you've had previously, if the candidate would like to introduce themselves, and then you're welcome to kick off with questions from the panel and proceed that way.
Yeah, Mr. Danley, if you'd please introduce yourself, say a little bit about it and why you're here, and then we'll open it up for questions.
Absolutely. Good evening, everybody, and everybody at home. I am Franklin Danley. It's a pleasure to be here. I've answered this question a few times. So, as I woke this morning and was saying my morning prayers, I asked God for some guidance. The short answer is, I am here for service. The longer answer is, when I was a child, I was bestowed this gift to be a servant, because my grandfather was a hemiplegic. He only had one side of his body that he can utilize, so he needed considerable help. And so, what was once duty and obligation became passion. And beyond that, I've worked in group homes with children. I have worked at Job Corps, Westview. So, this has been my life's work to just help people and serve. It's one of the philosophies that I live by. Life is a gift, and because of this journey, I am obligated to give back. So, that's a sense of duty that I have, and that's what I want to do for the city of Guthrie. Questions?
Questions for the applicant?
I have, I have two questions. The first question is, has two parts, and you answered this question previously, but I think it's important for the public to hear the answers to these two questions. And I know that when we did this last time, the other three members of the council didn't hear the answers to the question. So, I apologize that this is a repeat of the questions that I asked, but I think they're important questions for the public to understand. Political scientists generally say that legislators, which is what the city council is, it's a legislative body, have three roles. Those three roles are to provide direction through implementing public policy. That's passing ordinances, budgets, you know, plans and things like that. That's one role. The second role is to provide oversight. Once you have developed the policy and decided where the policy is going to go, which direction you're heading, to ensure that the city staff implement that policy according to what the council's direction is. And then the third role that a legislator has is providing constituency services. That's answering calls from your constituents and then advocating on their behalf, if they have legitimate concerns, to, you know, the appropriate person. In this case, we call the city manager and say, you know, Mrs. Smith's trash service wasn't picked up this week. You know, she's called late law, why is this happening? So, my first question is, given those three roles, which do you consider to be the most important of those roles? And then the second part of the question is, why do you consider that to be the most important role?
I would say policy. Policy is a guideline, and it dictates how we should operate. And in any government, I think that should be first and foremost. So, everybody will have a clear understanding of what has to happen and what's going on.
All right. And then my second question is, when an appeal from a lower board or commission comes before the council, what do you think the council, how do you think the council should approach that appeal? Do you think that it should be heard all anew, or should the council give great weight to the board or commission that decided the issue below?
Give that to me one more time, Grant.
Okay. So, when boards or commissions that are subordinate to the city council hear issues, people in some instances, not in all, can appeal that decision if they're unhappy with the decision to the council.
Okay.
And the council then hears the case. And what do you think the council's approach to hearing those kinds of issues from lower boards should be?
They should sustain that board unless they have acted erratic, haphazardly, or legal terms arbitrarily, or capricious.
Yeah. Okay, that's my, those are my questions. Thank you.
I'll jump in here, Mr. Danley.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for putting in your name.
Oh, not a problem.
Service community. I thank anyone who does that. One of the biggest things we have in our community is the capital improvement tax. Are you aware of the?
I am.
Providing all of the items that we have with that in town, which one sticks out to you that you think is the best that we've done?
Public safety. So, the MS station is going to go up. That's very important. Public safety, you never know you really need it, but it's like, it's like oxygen. If it's gone, then you can panic, right? So, I think that's first and foremost important out of the five items. Then, the water towers, I believe in clean water and a system to provide that. So, those are both great things, but initially, I would say the MS station.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else?
I have one.
Okay.
So, as we look to develop and the future of the city of Guthrie, we need to look at long-range plans, not just ten years or twenty-five years. What would you say would be an immediate goal for you in the next ten years to see for Guthrie, and long-term, maybe in twenty-five years?
So, immediately, just the aging infrastructure that we have. So, plumbing and things of that nature, where we have a great water treatment center, just ancillary plumbing around the town and city. That's very imperative, and long-term, just economic and sustainable growth. So, that's getting with emerging industries to create more jobs for people here, and partnering up with people, fine-combing what we have, like the Strategy Company did, to see if we can utilize that type of program or X that and move forward in a way that is amicable for all the citizens here.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Anybody else?
Well, other than the, you know, the application process we've already been through, I only have really one question. Councilman Gary, on his first question, kind of gave away those answers. I was going to ask, but I will ask, which are the basic roles of a city council person? Do you know what form of government we have in this city?
Correct. City manager?
Yes. And you understand the roles of the council person? Can you just highlight some of those?
Okay, so the city council kind of tells the city staff what to do, so come up with some ideas. Not like that, Eddie, but it's for them to carry out what the city board says here.
Thank you.
Not a problem.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay. No further questions? I'd like to, thank you, Mr. Danley.
Excellent. I appreciate it.
We'll go ahead and take out Deanna Dunning, if you can.
Yes, sir.
All right. And Mrs. Dunning, thank you for applying. I appreciate anyone who puts in for any kind of service to this city.
Yes, I appreciate it.
If you please state your name and tell us just a little bit about why you decided to put your name in for this appointment, and then we'll open it up for Q and A.
Okay. My name is Deanna Denning. It's pronounced many different ways around town, and that's fine. However you choose to pronounce it, Deaning, Dunning, but that's my last name. And I chose to run this time primarily after being involved with the CIP Committee the last year and a half, really sparked my interest in not just reading the after-effects of a city council meeting and what was decided and why those decisions were made. I actually got to see, I got to participate with other people from the city. We toured the water treatment plant. I have lived in this town over, I hate to say it, but over fifty-plus years, and I had never seen inside the water treatment plant. We toured Owens Field, we toured the fire department, the swimming pool, the municipal pool at Highland, and several other area projects that really opened my eyes to needs, wants, maintenance issues, and things that I thought, okay, if I'm going to continue to be a resident of this town, I enjoyed kind of adding my two cents to the committee, to have input into those projects, and budgetary issues and things of that nature. input into those projects and, and budgetary issues and, um, things of that nature. So, um, I did not think I was going to be on American Idol, but here we are. So with that being said, um, to answer your question, um, really with the CIP involvement, um, just sparked my interest into trying to get involved further and, um, participate in the forefront instead of the after effects.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes.
Members from council, like to start our questioning?
Yep.
Since I started last, I'll, to, to try and be consistent, I try to ask everybody the same questions. And in fairness to everybody who's watching, I am not ambushing you with those questions because I told you that the other people had heard my questions, and so they had an opportunity to think about those questions seriously since they'd heard them during the first rounds of interviews. You had not heard those questions, so I, I gave those questions to you because I, I think they're important questions for the public to hear the candidate and why they, why they think they, the, the way they do on these questions. So, um, my first question is two parts, and then I have a second question. My first question is, political scientists define the roles of a legislator, which is what the city council is, as having three major components. Those are to provide policy. If we think about Congress, they pass laws, and those laws are then implemented by the executive branch. The second is to provide oversight. Once you've passed regulation or laws, or in this case, what we call ordinances, it's to make sure that those are being implemented by staff. When we pass a budget, a budget is a policy document that the city staff is doing what we want within that budget. And then the third is to provide constituency servants, services, to listen to your constituents and if they have legitimate concerns, to advocate on their behalf. So given those three roles, which do you think, the question is, which do you think is the most important? And then the second part of that question is why?
Um, I, I think all three, um, are equally important, um, only because, um, I don't think you can have one without the other two. If you do, um, things don't function very well. It's hard to move policy, it's hard to create policy, it's hard to discuss policy, it's hard to educate, um, our constituents about policy if you don't have, um, some kind of background in the legislative process and/or, um, being accountable to our constituents. So kind of to answer your second question, I think that the most important of those three, um, of all three being important, I think the most important of those three is, um, to be a representative of the constituents in, in our ward. Because, um, without them, I mean, if we just come up here once a month and sit at a city council meeting, um, and do what we want to do, um, without that input, um, of, of those people, I don't think we're, we're being a very good community servant, which is what this is, obviously.
Thank you. My second question involves a second role that the council plays. The council oftentimes will hear appeals from lower boards or commissions, the commissions that are established under either our charter or ordinances. And those, if people are unhappy with the, uh, with the decision of a lower board, they in some instances, not in all, but in some instances, they may appeal that decision to the council. And what do you think the council's role is in hearing those appeals from lower boards or commissions?
I, when I was thinking about this question, um, I, I really had to apply my professional, um, job, what I do for a living, um, for the last 30-plus years, is, is I'm a registered nurse. And so as, um, I thought about the, the role of council and, and the, the boards and, and that position, we always have to, um, make sure that we act within my scope of practice in the state of Oklahoma. And my scope of practice in the state of Oklahoma may differ from the scope of practice of an RN in Texas or Nebraska or, or wherever. So, again, I, I think as a council, um, we have to, um, make sure that that board acted within their scope of practice or within their means with whatever decision they made and how they got to that decision, whether that be, you know, via the city charter or state law or, or, you know, city law, um, whatever that might be. But I think, um, first of all, we have to decide, did that happen? And if so, then, um, as far as city council's, um, role after that would be just to, I don't think it's our role to change those decisions or, um, if that scope was acted upon correctly, I don't think it's our role to try to change those decisions or give any, um, influence in those decisions. It would just be to vote, obviously, um, yes or no, um, according to what they brought forth to the council.
Thank you.
Didn't I go again?
Yes.
I was gonna do this. Okay. Um, you stated yourself that you were on the CIP commission, correct?
Yeah.
Which is the capital improvement project. Um, which, which project or which item in that, um, project do you think was the most beneficial to the city? And talk about it.
Um, I think the most important, um, comes down to basic, um, safety, basic, um, um, needs of, of all of us is, um, water, uh, water resources, uh, water to the city. Um, I think the, um, the water tower projects, um, for both of the water towers were very important. Um, obviously, when you, you don't realize how bad they looked, um, and I can only imagine what the inside looked like, um, until you compare the before and the after, night and day, um, just, they're so beautiful now. And also, prior, in, I mean, the last few months, we were in dire straits because of the weather and the lack of rain, um, that we had, and Guthrie Lake was just almost barren. Um, just a sad situation out there. Thank goodness, um, we've had a lot of rainfall and, um, that is not a problem. We're kinda at the other end of the spectrum with the rainfall. But, um, with that being said, I think the most important projects, um, would be infrastructure, you know, just, just water, um, to the city, um, always watching what that looks like. Um, and then I think there was a booster pump or something on the west side of the, for the cottonwood, um, that was repaired, um, as well to help, um, that flow of water. And it's just things we don't think about. We, we obviously take for granted. I do as well. You turn on the shower, you turn on your washing machine, dishwasher, you don't think about, you know, where does this come from? You know, um, the city obviously, um, prioritized that, and I, I think that's one of the, was the main important, um, project.
Okay. Thank you. And Councilman Williams, do you want to, oh, or, it's somebody else? It doesn't matter.
No, she answered my question.
Where would you like to see the city of Guthrie be in the next five years, 10 years, 20 years? I know I'm stealing what you were saying, but that's what I asked, but where would you like to see us?
I have one question, so it's okay.
Um, you know, that's, that's a hard one, um, because I have lived here for a long time and, um, don't laugh, Adam.
No.
[laughing].
You said 50-plus years.
Yeah. I can't believe that. But anyway, um, it's true. Uh, Guthrie is a unique, um, town, city. Um, I ha, I work all over the state of Oklahoma. Um, we, our proximity to Edmund, um, has always been a detriment, um, only because a lot of people work outside of Guthrie. Um, and so we have, we stop on our way home to grab groceries, to grab dinner, to grab whatever the case may be. Um, I was very interested in the gentleman's project, um, that first spoke because I think this day and age, it's going to take people like that to assist us because just us here in town as citizens, we always, you know, think, okay, well, if we could just get a Garth Brooks to come and invest some money here or, you know, like, it would take a celebrity of some sort, like Pahaska, or like some of the other towns who have had that happen, um, because we can't do it on our own. It just, it hasn't happened in 54 years that I know of, and I don't see it happening in the next, you know, fif, five. But it, it's a great, we have a great start. Um, and I think it was gonna take community, it's going to take partnerships, it's going to take, um, communication, um, and it's going to take younger people stepping up and getting involved. Because, um, I mean, at Facebook, isn't it, you know, sitting behind your computer and, and typing, you know, this or that, or what the city did or didn't do? That doesn't cut it. It's going to take younger people taking an interest in this town. And my own daughters, I mean, they were born and raised here, went to school here, um, they don't live here anymore, but they are just now, one's almost 30 and one is 25, and they are just now kind of seeing like, okay, Guthrie is kind of a pretty cool town, but it wasn't so much, um, you know, when, when they were here. Um, so it's going to take that younger generation just getting involved and knowing that this city has something special to offer, um, that you can't find in Oklahoma City, Norman, Moore. You can always go to those places and visit, but we've, we've got to get younger folks involved.
So I want to ask, and I'm gonna ask this one because I've asked this one to others, uh, and I've already had their answers. I don't need them again. But what you, I, I will make a quick statement before I ask the question. And this particular question is because how you answered Councilman Agary's initial question was dead on. It takes all three. Uh, policy implementation and constituents. It's all of them. Uh, at least that's my opinion. That's the way it's always been. So with that being said, if you were in a council meeting and an issue came up that you were 100% for that issue, whatever, and I could give some examples, but I won't, okay? And all of your constituents, and I mean, you've talked to 100-plus of them, literally, were dead against it, what are you gonna do? And knowing that that vote is gonna create a policy?
You know, I think all of us, um, at the end of the day, um, have to live with decisions that we make, whether it be here on city council or walking down the street, um, driving down the highway, um, there's decisions we have to make. And personally, um, I would like to, um, lay my head down at night, knowing that I made the best decision possible for the constituents that, um, voiced their opinions to me and, um, hold that at the highest regard. Because, um, I don't think any of us would be in the seats here, um, today or, or standing here if we didn't have some sort of, um, higher calling, which also includes an obligation to, um, our constituents and to the people that, um, we represent. So, uh, if we're just here to run our own meeting and our own agenda, I can do that at home, watching it on TV. Um, I, I don't have to talk to anybody. But I don't think that's what any of us, um, want to do.
So, and thank you for that answer.
Yes.
Uh, the last thing I have is, do you have any personal or professional relationships that may hinder you as a councilwoman?
I don't. I kind of wish I did, but I, I don't. Um, I, my, my family had a business here, um, since 1929. Unfortunately, or fortunately, my dad, um, talked me out of continuing that legacy, um, in, in a, in the funeral home business here in Guthrie. Um, so I went into nursing instead. Um, I, I, sometimes I regret that, but anyway, um, so I, I don't have a business here. I don't have a lot of, um, interpersonal relationships with people, um, that have businesses here or would have any conflict, um, if I was chosen for city council. Um, I, I work from my home, I, um, travel all over the state of Oklahoma to take care of, um, injured workers and, um, go to their, um, appointments and, um, schedule, um, surgeries for them and then follow them, um, after that until they return to work. So I'm very busy. Um, I, I, I'm not in Guthrie, um, to, um, to, to let my job interfere with my role on city council or being available to city council. But with that being said, I don't, I don't have any, um, problems or relationship issues with city council.
So the last question I asked, and this is a short one.
Okay.
Is, uh, what's your approach to handling controversial, um, and complicated-type issues?
Well, that is a perfect question for what I just said about my job. Um, I act very independent, I work very independently, um, as a nurse case manager. But I case manage, um, catastrophically injured workers in the state of Oklahoma, which means there is usually an insurance company, there's an insurance adjuster, sometimes there's attorneys, um, there's physicians, there's the injured worker and their family. Um, some, most times I have to meet, um, that injured worker in the hospital, um, a lot of times at OU, our, our trauma center here in Oklahoma. And I walk into that room as a complete stranger, um, and I'm, I'm their case manager, and that's all they know. Um, they have just been notified that their loved one was in a, um, work accident, and things change on a dime. But in that process, I have to earn their trust and I have to earn, um, their willingness to share with me, um, on a moment's notice, um, what, you know, some of the most intricate, um, delicate medical problems that we could ever imagine. Um, and I have done that job for about 14 years now. So, um, I feel that I have very, um, it kind of can turn on a dime type, um, skills. Um, I have, um, the ability to communicate with lots of different types of people. Um, I, I left an appointment this afternoon at St. Francis Hospital in Tulsa, and I was watching as I, I walked out the doors, um, and I just left my injured worker, and I looked at the flower bed, and there was a high school-aged kid with a five-gallon bucket, and he was weeding the flower bed at St. Francis. I saw an ambulance come around the corner, paramedics, EMTs, delivering a patient to the ER. I saw dietary staff pushing a cart down the hall to go up to the hospital floors, um, to deliver food to patients. And when I went to my car, I thought, you know, all of that just happened in a three-minute interaction as I was walking to my car. But it takes a village. It takes everybody. And I don't care if you're the janitor or you're the CEO of St. Francis, I'm going to treat you and speak to you and communicate with you the same way. And I think that's what we all, um, I think at the end of the day, um, need to think about.
Thank you for that.
Yes.
That's it for me.
All right. Um, so on your application, you had listed the civic activities that you have served on here locally and, um, helping community positive cause is wonderful, and, uh, also being on, uh, the board for the Hope House. And you've mentioned, um, being on the CIP board, uh, that committee as well. How, um, how do you think serving in those capacities were different, uh, than serving on CIP? And how have you been able to relay what you've learned from CIP to maybe those, um, who didn't quite understand the inner workings, um, of what we, what many of us had to go through whenever we were in there and learning so many intricate pieces, uh, of infrastructure and needs? Uh, and how, how far to stretch that, that what might be 14 million in sales in tax dollars, uh, by the end of the term? So how did you, how do you think that that was a difference?
Um, I think the main difference that first comes to mind is, um, to, let's, I'm gonna take the Hope House for an example. Um, and that's kind of why I come back to the, the infrastructure and, and the water issues is, um, a lot of the folks at Hope House, and again, it's, it's a hierarchy of needs. They don't, they can't actualize a water need for the city of Guthrie when they haven't had food in three weeks. So to, to answer your question, it's, it's a stark difference. Uh, because CIP, um, we learned about, and we were willing to learn about, you know, how the city functions, the projects that were on the table. city functions, the projects that were on the table, and the vote that went out, you know, via Facebook, via social media, to kind of help, have the city, have the residents pick which projects were important to them. But at the same time, there's a lot of people that are very intimidated by this process, by this, just you guys, believe it or not. I mean, oh, he's on city coun, oh, she's on city council, you know, we have to be careful what we say, or how we say it. So again, just being able to get down on their level and understand where different people are coming from. Because where I, you know, the angle I come from, the angle you come from, where some of our constituents come from, are not all the same, and that's a good thing. But at the same time, I can't expect people to ask certain questions, or, another example is just knowing the difference between what a city function is and what the county function is. If you don't live in the city limits, you know, if you live outside in the county, the city charter, the city runnings don't apply to you. And so, just that, some people don't understand that, and that's okay. But, you know, we just have to educate them as to what our role is. So to answer your question, it was starkly different from CIP to being on the Hope House board. But I will say, being on the Hope House board was much more rewarding, personally, than the CIP. But I did learn a lot, and again, that's why I'm here, what brought me here. So I hope to help in all realms of, whether it be the Hope House, HCPC, you guys know I volunteer a lot with the animal shelter as well. So whether it be A, B, or C, it's all very rewarding.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for the?
I had a follow-up based on your answers, and based on Councilman Bothroyd's question. Again, in public policy analysis, research, political scientists distinguish between, in a democracy, preferred by most and most preferred. And based on your discussion of the differences between your experience sitting on Hope House and dealing with people in a different situation than policymakers, which do you think you should follow if you have to make a choice between what is most preferred and preferred by most? And then how would you rationalize that decision to those people that you have to answer to?
That's the hardest question of the evening, Grant.
I apologize. You know, it's just, it's a follow-up to, to, what?
A very political, political science question, and that's not my forte, but I guess to, can I restate the question?
Sure, absolutely, yes, absolutely.
I think you're asking, what would be the most important to follow?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay.
Between preferred by most and most preferred, which are oftentimes mutually exclusive categories.
Yes, yes.
Not always, but oftentimes.
Yes, yes, I would say most of the time mutually exclusive. You know, I think it would just vary by situation. I mean, I think there's some situations that I may not agree with, but as far as policy goes, if it is the best policy of, for the city, of the city, and the majority votes for that, I think whether I agree with it or not, I have to, to obviously abide by that as a citizen. The remainder of that question, as far as, I think we also have to take into consideration, again, the citizens, the people that don't have a voice, or that may not know how to verbalize that voice, or to, and if I am the only person, and they are, you know, in my ward, and I'm the only person they feel comfortable verbalizing that to, then I would take that information to the different constituent wards, the different councilmen, to relay that information. So I think, I don't know if that answered your question, but I think it just would depend on the situation at hand, and then what group kind of held the most weight for the most good.
Let me, I'll give you an example, a specific example, that I think is relatable to you, and how would you handle this. So you're a nurse, and you have to deal with people who are critically injured, and in many instances, right, you're going to have to tell a patient that they're going to, let's say they are injured on the job, and they have a traumatic brain injury, okay? And you're going to have to tell the family and this patient that they're going to have to do things that the patient, I mean, it's been my experience in human nature, that patients don't want to do, and there's lots of studies that suggest this, that people don't take the full course of antibiotics, right? They get to feeling better and they stop taking antibiotics.
Save them in the cabinet for the next time.
Right, yeah, for the next time.
Yeah, yeah.
That's bad, right? And how do you, how do you tell people, like, you really need to, you know, I mean, you have this traumatic brain injury, you're going to have to go through months of rehabilitation, and make it relatable to them, so that they understand what is most preferred, which is this long-term outcome versus a short-term, you know, I, you know.
Yes.
I feel better if I don't do the physical therapy, if I, if I just lay here, you know.
Yes. And, and as their case manager, I, number one, have formed that relationship with them, first and foremost. Because if they don't, if I come across as, I know everything, and this is what you're going to do, and this is why you're going to do it, and if you don't do it, I'm going to call your employer and tell them that you're not going to physical therapy. If I come across that way, they're not going to like me, number one, they're not going to trust me, and they're not going to particularly do what maybe they should do. Whereas if I have a relationship with them, a positive relationship, and I gain that trust, and then I can explain to them, okay, this is why the doctor has ordered A, B, and C, and this is why physical therapy is so important, and this is why you take all of your antibiotics. But then again, at the end of the day, I also have to realize, because burnout is real, especially in healthcare nowadays, that's a whole nother conversation. But I also have to realize that I can only do so much, and I can provide them with that education, and the reasons why, and give other patient examples of, okay, Mr. Jones didn't go to therapy, and his knee locked, and they had to do a second surgery, and he was out of work for another year, and so on and so forth. But at the end of the day, I have to let it go, because I've provided the communication, I've provided the relationship, I've provided the education, and if they still choose not to participate in their own care, again, personal responsibility. We all have, at the end of the day, a responsibility to do what we need to do. But if they choose not to, I've done all I can do. And you just kind of have to learn to, to let it go, and do the best you can.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions?
I think she's answered everything for me right at this point. I could ask a few more, but I'm not, because I thought that what we're doing is asking the same questions that we've asked before and prior, but apparently not.
Anything from this end over here?
No, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Deanna.
All right, thank you so much. At this minute, we're going to take just a three-minute break?
Three.
Five-minute break. And then we'll continue with Mr. Wood.
There's a little, we can share. We can make some.
The government is like, you know.
I'm just.
Touching fingertips. You're like about this much.
Okay, we are back.
They're huge. Anywhere from a hundred and thirty.
All right, we are back after a short break. To continue the appointment to vacant Ward One council position. It's our final applicant, Mr. Ed Wood. And so what we'll have you do is just state your name, even though I just said it. And give a description about yourself and why you decided to have us apply for this appointment, and then we'll open it up for Q and A.
Okay, well, my name is Ed Wood. I live here in Guthrie, East Washington. I have been on city council before. I've been, oh, Vice Mayor before. And I have some extra time now, and I figured this would be a good time to step back up and do community service here on the council.
We'll start with Grant, because that's how we've done it. All right. So you've heard these questions before. I've asked the other candidates these questions, and I just think that it's important that the citizens here, the response in the other committee that interviewed the last time didn't hear the question. So I apologize that you're getting the same question again, but at least you've had time to think about it, hopefully. So political scientists say that there are three roles that a legislator does, you know, when they become a legislator, and the city council is a legislated body. Those are setting public policy, oversight, once that policy is set, and then the third is constituency services, answering the phone calls of the people who call you and say things like, "My trash isn't picked up, and I've called Laylaw. Why is this happening to me?" And which of those three do you think is the most important is the first question? And the second part of the question is, why do you think that is the most important?
Well, listening to the citizens is what we're here for, especially on our ward. But to be for all the citizens in Guthrie. So if we hear an issue that needs to be taken care of, the first thing we do is we come to city staff and ask what's going on and see what's going on, or take a look from the citizen that's having an issue. It is very important for that, that we look after that first off. Second off, there are things that the city council has to look at other than for the management of the city. And at that time, that's when we, as a city council, get together, discuss when we are in session, and between us, one-on-one at times, to find out what would be the best course of action to take to keep Guthrie moving forward.
Okay, thank you. My second question is, in many instances, the city council has to hear appeals from subordinate boards, boards that are formed either under the charter or by ordinance that the council has passed. And what is the appropriate standard of review that the council should take when a citizen is unhappy with the decision of a board or commission below, and they appeal that to the city council?
Well, city council has its, it has, what it needs to do is to listen first to the different subordinate commissions and boards and find out what their idea is, also from city planning, from everybody else, city staff. It is still the citizens' right to disagree with that ruling. That's where we come in and look at what the whole over system is. Now, I feel that the city council should first listen to what the board has to say, but there are times, and more than likely, would go along with that board and what their suggestion is. There are times, and it's on a separate per-case basis, that maybe they didn't see what is coming down, and then the council overrule what the board did. But for the most part, the council should and should listen very closely to what the boards and commissions are suggesting.
Thank you. My question is, one of the biggest things that we have going on right now in the community is the Capital Improvement Project, CIP, sales tax. Would you maybe describe what you think has been the most beneficial project that we've done from that sales tax?
Oh, well, I feel that both, well, it's been now many, a long time, but our water treatment plants, especially our sewage treatment plant now, I think that's a very big thing that we've had, we needed to have, and was going to make, we were going to have to have that regardless. So that is really one of the main things that I think the CIP is a good thing for doing that. Now, we need to start looking at other infrastructure, but at that point, that's one of the main things right there.
All right, thank you. Tracy?
Well, you took my question, basically. But what was your, mostly exciting part of being on the council? What did you, what was accomplished that you valued most highly?
Well, I think we did a lot of, when I was on the council. We were able to put to bed the RD1 problem that we had for many years. That was one of the things. We brought Leroy Alsop on as city manager, which I feel has really taken Guthrie a whole new step, and now our new city manager, I think, has just really taken off and doing, Mr. Faulkner is doing a great job under the leadership or in his footsteps. So that was some of the bigger things that we were able to do.
Thank you.
The only thing I haven't asked, and I asked, that I haven't asked you, is what's your approach to handling controversial and complicated issues? And this is the only question I'm going to ask, because just like with Franklin, I'm not going to repeat the questions that we've already went through in the initial interview, and their questions are probably sufficient at this point. So that's my question that I didn't ask you in the initial interview. I asked him.
Conflicts need to be talked out. We need to have a dialogue, whether it's between the people on the board, or one-on-one with a person on the council, or keeping it under a quorum of three people speaking at any given time, but it has to be talked out. If there's conflict, then there's always going to be conflict. Everybody has different thoughts on things. We may never always agree. There are times that, well, we will never agree on certain things, but at least we can talk it out and find out what we're going to do and how we're going to do it, and at least come to a common consensus and carry on from there.
All right, thanks for that.
Okay, Jeff had asked before.
No, go ahead.
Okay. So it's been a little while since you haven't served in this capacity, but you have had a long time to observe. And since you hadn't served in this capacity, do you like the direction the city has been going?
Yes, I feel the city has been progressing in a positive direction. It always moves slowly, but I have not seen things just that I would be extremely angry about of the way the city has gone, since I have been out for the last five years or so.
Right. Is there anything that you would look to change or would may have guided a little differently?
Not being a part of it, there's really nothing that I could say I would change.
Thank you, sir.
Jeff? Can I, yeah, I believe the other two candidates were asked what they saw as their vision for Guthrie in the next 10 and then 20 years. They were asked that. So I will, I'll ask that.
Okay. I'd like to see the I-35 corridor be extended and expanded on for tax revenue, for all sorts of different types of enterprise and business. I feel that the downtown historic district should stay historic. It needs to be maintained, obviously, but it kept historic. That's kind of our identity. To get the tax dollars in, the other thing in the next 10 or so years, since now we have, well, even though our water plant is aging, but it's still new compared to the other ones, and we have a brand-new sewage treatment plant, now we need to think about infrastructure, water and sewer mains throughout the, and those are going to take a lot, and that'll have to go over a number of years to maintain. But that's what my vision is for Guthrie. Let it grow that way outside the Capitol Historic District, up and down Division and along I-35 would be a good thing for our tax revenue.
Thank you.
Any more for Tracy?
No, thank you.
No, I don't have any follow-up. Thank you.
Okay. I guess that's it, Mr. Wood. Yeah. Thank you very much, counsel.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, staff and council. Thank you for putting your name in, Mr. Wood.
Thank you.
Okay.
Now you got to go back in the room.
Oh, yeah, you got to stop.
Yeah.
Very, very secret. Not at all.
So I would like to make a comment, if I may. And the, we need to put, obviously, we need to fill the seat if we can. I think that based on what we saw this evening and in the past, that, and what's gone on, is that Deanna is probably the right candidate, and I'm going to make a motion for her.
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any other conversation or discussion? Okay, test your votes.
I'll vote straight.
Okay, unanimous approval to appoint Deanna Dunning to the vacant Ward One council position, trustee seat.
Oh, you gonna do it?
You need to do it?
Yep.
Okay.
You'll have to go down there.
Yeah. Can't do it right here?
No.
No, Adam, you're gonna stand proud and do that.
And remember, it's longer than the Constitution.
Yeah, you backed out the whole time?
Yep.
Wow.
One person unentertaining. Hold it down.
Well, before I do that, I, yeah, I would like to thank once again all of the applicants who put in your name in. I appreciate anyone who comes out and agrees to serve on any, in any capacity with the city, whether it be on a board or commission, and especially for council, so we appreciate it. It didn't take very long. We have already voted, and if Mrs. Dunning would meet me up front here, we will swear you in. Now, I've been in your spot twice, so I get what you're going through. So I'll raise your right hand. And repeat after me. I state your name.
Deanna Dunning.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And that I will not knowingly.
And I will not knowingly.
Receive directly or indirectly.
Receive directly or indirectly.
Any money or other valuable thing.
Any money or any valuable thing.
For the performance or nonperformance.
For the performance or nonperformance.
Of any act or duty.
Of any act or duty.
Pertaining to my office.
Pertaining to my office.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
I further swear.
I further swear.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
My duties as council member.
My duties as council member.
Of the city of Guthrie.
Of the city of Guthrie.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I want to sit here and then suggest he does mine. Did your teeth do like steeds in between?
Yeah.
It's hard to see where the commas are on this thing to know what you're doing.
That's a lot.
Yeah, it is. Okay. All right, now that we have the oath of office for the Ward One appointment, that was item number 10, we'll do item number 11, the election of Vice Mayor. Discussion, consideration, and possible action by the city council to elect a Vice Mayor for a term of two years, expiring the first city council meeting in May 2027. I will begin on this one. We had this discussion last time, now we have two more members, so it's a full council to make the decision. We had discussed last time about the duties of Vice Mayor, which there was a little disagreement on what those duties are. There's, seems to be one official but two unofficial. The one official is that they are to fill in for the mayor and run the meetings in a, if the mayor is absent. The other duties also is that we have a city managers' meeting with the mayor. Traditionally, it's been weekly, but now we're doing it every other week, and it's been this way for decades. And then the third duty is to stand in for ceremonial situations when the mayor cannot be present in town, also representing the city in matters pertaining to, like, I don't know, with federal grants, et cetera. Meaning they go out and they would represent on the city's, argue on the city's behalf, is what I'm trying to say. But we didn't tend to agree on that, so let's open this up for discussion again, if you would want to.
Well, I mean, I, as far as discussion, for what? On who a nominee might be on this?
Well, no, just, just, there was disagreement last time that that is one of the requirements, is to be available during the day for.
I don't know if, I think everybody on here has a job, and so that may take precedent. Inavailability for anybody, potentially not. Me personally, it wouldn't, but others, it may. I think that longevity on council deserves an opportunity to be Vice Mayor. Traditionally, we've made that change every two years since I've been on, 10 years. And that's why initially I was nominating Jeff prior to our, all of this, you know, the past two councils that we were, that we went through. And I'll still make that nomination, because I think that longevity and opportunity is, should be granted to everyone that wants that opportunity.
I would agree, but however, I would then go back to, it's not just about wanting the opportunity, it's about actually being able to fulfill the requirements and represent Guthrie, and that's going to happen at 11 o'clock.
I do agree with that. And so, but that, wouldn't that, I don't know that that's up to you and I to dictate. I think that would be up to the candidate to make a decision if they would be able to responsibly handle that position or not.
I also agree. However, having spoken with everyone on this council and knowing kind of their daily lives, like you said, you and two others are not, are not available during the day.
No, I said, I am one of the ones that are available. I do what I want.
Okay.
Okay, I don't have to, I don't have to report to anybody.
If I may say, say it quickly. I searched the city charter today. I also looked at OML to try and find some clarity on this, and I can't find anywhere that the Vice Mayor is expected to be anything except to replace the mayor when he's out of town to run this meeting. That's all I can find.
Well, yeah, I said that. It's the only thing that's actually in the charter.
Right.
But just because it's not in the charter does not mean it's.
But that's what, but that's what this council governs by, the charter.
Well, I know. Obviously, we don't govern off the charter.
I know, but we don't make up our own rules, is what I'm saying. We govern by the charter. And that's what we do.
Right.
And so, with that being said, that's what my motion is.
I'll second that.
And so.
For Jeff.
Okay.
To nominate Jeff.
I was going to, all right, well, I, after this, I will make a motion for Vice Mayor Gary again, but there's been a motion and a second made, so is there any other discussion on that?
Yeah, the discussion is, every two years, we've made this change historically, and those that wanted an opportunity got an opportunity. And I can tell you, I've been on here 10 years, and I haven't seen very many times where the Vice Mayor has done anything but run that meeting.
I did check the history on it in the last 20 years. It's been, there's been consecutive Vice Mayors in a row. And then there has been some that's alternated, and just depends on their ability to stay on council, so I, the fact that it's always changed is not true.
No, I'm not saying always. I said, since I've been on, historically, it's, it's changed.
Well, I'm just putting out two.
That's all. I can only, I can only talk to what I've been through for the last 10 years. I can't talk about 30 years ago.
Right. Well, I checked it, actually, it's 25. I checked it since 2000, and it's been the same people, and it has alternated, so it's both.
So there it is. It's both.
Anybody, any other comments or input on this? It's mainly me and Ryan.
That's seven people up here. Well, anybody else, you know, speak up.
I mean, I will also say the city charter doesn't say it must change every two years.
No, it does not say that, but the city charter says that the Vice Mayor's role is to manage this meeting when the mayor's not here.
It does, it says to fulfill the duties of the mayor.
Of which is managing this meeting.
I think he has a few more duties than that.
Well, maybe sign in some checks.
And congratulations.
Okay, or some, some certificates of, Gravesite Certificate.
Right here.
Which you got right there. Do you expect to be out a lot?
What's that?
Do you expect as a new mayor to be out a lot?
Oh, I am out a lot. I'm asked to speak at functions all the time.
No, I'm talking about off of council, out of state, unavailable.
Oh, I, I mean, my first priority is this, is this community.
So your availability in your mind over the next two years is pretty much 100%?
Unless I'm, unless I'm sick, I would.
Okay, well, then, I mean, that's why I motion for Jeff.
Well, Jeff, how do you feel about this?
Well, I'll accept it. If that's, if that's the council's decision, and that's what they'd like, I'll work whatever way I can to help the people out, help everybody out, all citizens, both as a council, attorney, city manager, city clerk, even Dan.
I hate to throw you in the deep end so early, but I got thrown in the deep end on my first meeting, so I'm going to ask you, Deanna, what your opinion is.
I was just getting ready to ask. So what is the, is there an alternative? Like, is there another candidate that would fit the?
Availability that I'm talking about?
Yes.
Well, to your, I was under the impression that, that Brian, Tracy, and Jeff work during the day, and they'd be unavailable to meet, for example, like with Congresswoman Bice, you know, or any other representative, which has happened during the day to meet, to do these things and argue on behalf of Guthrie, which unfortunately does not, coincidentally, or is not timely to happen at 5:00 onward.
So to answer that, though, I do work during the day?
But I thought you did.
But listen to me. I do work during the day, but everybody rolls up to me. I don't report to anybody. So I, my, my schedule is 100% availability for whatever is needed, and anybody in this community that's ever called on me knows that.
Okay.
So.
I also think, Meneka, are you, do you fit that criteria with availability?
Yes, I work for myself.
Okay, and then so does Grant. So Grant works, so all three of you work for yourselves, or?
I work for a corporation.
All three of you are available during the day to perform mayoral duties, is what I would say, and then?
Well, we just hope you don't, we just hope you don't get sick over the next two years. Other than that, you'll be here, right?
I, I hope so.
Okay, but you don't plan any extended travel or?
No.
Movies that are going to take you away for months at a time, or any of that, right?
No.
Okay.
I don't plan on that. But, but there is more to it than that, though. There's a meeting with the city manager.
Then that's not a prerequisite either.
I know it's not a prerequisite, but it is important, and it happens.
I know.
Does that answer your question at all, maybe?
Yes.
Well, the only person who has not said anything is you, Vice Mayor Gary. What are your thoughts? Well, I, I mean, this is, and I will admit this is self-serving, but Brian is correct that the city charter is, if you look at formal power.
that the city charter is, if you look at formal power, again, he and I have had this debate about, there is a difference between formal power and informal power. And part of what I view the job of being Vice Mayor as is not just running meetings, but it is being available to when our congressional delegation shows up. And sometimes it's on very short notice, being able to meet with them and discuss with them important aspects of economic development that impact this community, and that's things like the Guthrie Airport, which we have managed to secure an enormous amount of federal funding to get a parallel taxiway, to improve the airport, to build a new terminal, which will serve as the gateway to Guthrie. And I think that I have been there and done that consistently over the last two years that I have held the position.
And you have, and I'll make a comment on that. Aren't you, didn't we elect you to be on that board, the airport board?
It was a confirmation of the mayor's nomination when Mayor Ghentling, yes.
So you're on the airport board as a council member, along with Mr. Williams, and so those investments would have happened with or without you being Vice Mayor, right?
I think, I think, Brian, one of the things, again, if we talk about informal power, is the position that the Vice Mayor brings to when I meet with Congresswoman Weiss, and when I meet with state legislators, and when I meet with the ODAA. And it's not just the airport, it's about other issues as well. For example, tomorrow, I have agreed, because I was Vice Mayor in the past, and we were not sure if there was a conflict with Adam to go and represent the city at OML's Regional Council tomorrow at 10:30 a.m. So, I mean, it's, it's not just the airport, it's not just, you know, that. It's, it's a lot of different functions that I think that I have gone to over the past two years and represented the city.
If I can interject something in this, I think the conversation is good and the direction is going, but I don't think that there's anything that requires more of a burden on the Vice Mayor than it does the mayor. And there's no requirement that the mayor attend all those things. That's not part of what, when you sign up for mayor, that you have to agree to all that. And I don't think that there's anything in state law or the charter that creates any further obligation to the Vice Mayor.
It doesn't, but it still doesn't mean that it's not good to do that. It's part, it's what I, it's what I view as being part of the job.
It's, it comes, it comes back to a perceived power thing, is what it comes back to. Okay? With you, right? Because again, what you're, what I'm hearing is, and just to be quite transparent, throw it on the table, is that if you weren't Vice Mayor, the things at the airport wouldn't have happened.
I don't think that you can say that, Brian. I think that's a, I think that's an argument ad absurdum. What I'm saying is that I think that it is incumbent upon the position to be more than just what the charter says. And, you know, I mean, the charter doesn't tell us where the restrooms are in City Hall, but, you know, you, you know.
But that's not my question. The question is, is that would we have gained the same funding without you being Vice Mayor versus you being Vice Mayor? That's a legitimate question.
I don't, no. I mean, I, it's impossible to prove a negative. So I, I can't answer that.
Well, Tracy, you're on that board. What is your opinion of it?
I didn't have anything to do with that funding coming, so. I mean, I don't know who are involved, the city and Stephanie and Weiss and the earmarks, so. Do I think being a Vice Mayor on the airport made a difference? I, I don't think so. I think it was the city management and the airport itself that made all the difference, that got the earmarked funds. I don't think it was up to one individual, certainly, title or otherwise.
Okay. I will just say generally that, on behalf of the city, it's the mayor and the Vice Mayor that represent the city, argue for the city on many matters in many different categories. So it naturally stands to reason that you need to be available in order to do those things, regardless of what the charter says or not.
And, and I hear what you're saying, only, the only thing you're leaving out is five other council people.
Correct.
They give up a tremendous amount of time to represent the city.
I, I'm not taking that away, but when, when people come into the community, they want to speak to who? City manager, mayor, Vice Mayor.
I don't know that they ever bring the Vice Mayor out.
Yes, they, yes, they do. And if I cannot go when they ask for the mayor, the Vice Mayor needs to be able to step into my place.
Again?
Today, I thought we were, I was supposed to go to OML, but I was not going to be able to go because I had prior commitments and Shawnee on a different board. And Grant Agiri was going to step in for me because I had two conflicting issues with city matters. I don't know if anybody else would have been able to go to represent Guthrie, and that's my point.
But did, so what happened?
We were, that meeting is tomorrow.
Oh, so it wasn't today?
So, but, yes, but I, we, we thought it was, but that's just my point. So I was going to go to Shawnee to represent a board and a commission, but I'm on there with the city, and Grant was going to go in my place to OML, but OML's tomorrow. But the point is, that, that's our point, is the, and this happens a lot. Anybody else planning on going tomorrow to that? Nope. Well, that proves my point again. It'll be me and Grant, because we're the ones that are available. So, but there, there is a motion on the table for Councilman Taylor to be Vice Mayor, and there's been a second, correct?
Yes.
All right. So we have that, so we want to vote on that, and then?
I think so.
Okay.
All right.
I'll vote three.
Okay. And it passes four to three to appoint Jeff Taylor as the Vice Mayor. Congratulations, Vice Mayor Taylor.
Congratulations.
Yeah. All right. Item number 12, City Managers' Report.
Yes, Mayor and Council. First, we'd like to say from the staff, we appreciate all the applicants for the vacant Ward 1 position. Thank you for, for your participation and going through the interview process. Just like to welcome Councilwoman Deanna Denning. Is that, is that correct?
Yes.
I always say Dunning, and then she looks at me and, Eddie, that's not right. So then I tried to do it again, and she's like, Eddie, you almost got it, but you didn't get there. So, welcome to the council. We look forward to the future with a full 68th City Council. With a full council, I want to let you know that the orientation date in which O-MAG comes in and does every two years is tentatively scheduled for July 15th. So it will take place here in council chambers. I'll get this out to you in a separate email, but please write that down on your calendar. If you have a conflict, please let me know as soon as possible. Just so you know, O-MAG does actually pay us to go through that orientation. So as a member of the O-MAG risk pool, the more educated that we are as a staff and council members, the lower the liability. So there's a huge interest for O-MAG for us to have gone through that training. So we do look forward to that every two years. It is the wettest start to the summer on record in quite some time. I don't know if you've noticed, but both the lakes are full and have been going over the spillway, which is great. We are happy to see that. We, I think we've had enough rain. We're, we're glad the lakes are full. We're glad that the state is not in a drought, and hasn't been for the first time since 2019. So excited for that. That has been a huge topic of concern for the community for quite some time. However, do want to let you know that from a staff perspective, we are still working towards the future to make sure that, you know, every 10, 15 years when we experience a drought to this level, we want to be prepared for the next 10 to 15 years. So as staff, we're exploring those opportunities, and we'll be bringing those to you probably in a retreat or a workshop format, workshop format, excuse me, in the future. It is budget season, so we are working on the budget as well as contract negotiations with both unions. In addition to budget season, it is also event season, which never ends here in Guthrie. Red Brick Nights will be back on July 5th with the Fireworks of Pop and Fireworks Show. Several events over the last weekend, one at The Rock with, excuse me, Bike Night, and then also Pops and Hops, Guthrie Brewery &amp; Co.'s first event, where they closed Harrison off and had great attendance. In fact, the brewery staff let us know they, they couldn't handle any more people on Saturday afternoon, Saturday evening. So although the weather was not fantastic, it had rained four inches overnight and then was very muggy, folks were still out and about and shopping in the community. So that's, that's great to see. I did send out an email this morning to council and staff. I'm sure you've received it. We are still working through the permitting process with the NSF to repair the Cottonwood Creek Water Main Crossing. If you'll recall, the council authorized staff to execute contracts in an amount not to exceed $600,000. I'm pleased to share that with the engineering and all permitting, the total amount comes to $476,704,46. So $476,000. Granted, we're not to construction yet, but we are well under that $600,000 figure, and want to keep you apprised of that. So in your email, you received a bid tab sheet from the two companies who did the projects, and as well as a task order from Myers Engineering, which details all of the fees for engineering and permitting through this process. Another note in my email this morning, we did identify a water main that runs parallel to the railroad tracks from approximately East Warner to College that has never been permitted. So while we're in this permitting process, the NSF was very kind to let us know that we either need to permit that water line or move it. And so, I said, well, I really need to get water to the west side of the city, and that's my top priority right now. Can we phase this out? How can we look at, you know, maybe replacing that water main in the future, or permitting it, you know, say in the next 15, 18, 24 months? BNSF appears to be receptive to that idea, but that's something they're not going to let us push too far down the road. So keep that in mind. That is something we will be working on. And then lastly, as the mayor previously mentioned, we will be hosting OML tomorrow, the Regional Council, at Meridian Technology Center. And that's all I have for you, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Fonger. Item number 13, request comments from members of City Council. So I will start down here. Councilmen Williams?
No, sir.
Okay. Vice Mayor Taylor?
Thank you, staff. Dan, you did a great job tonight. I appreciate you. You kept under five minutes, 10 minutes.
Five seconds.
Five, see, you really did. And I think it's going to be great. Shawna, what you're doing is really going to be fantastic, too. I really appreciate your ideas and what you've put together. So, and other than that, well, thank you for running. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilwoman Denning?
Thank you, Dan, for entertaining us in the American Idol back room. Thank you, Council, for your vote. I look forward to working with each and every one of you. Thank you.
Councilman Agiri? I want to thank the people who took the time to apply. Again, I think it speaks volumes to the community that we have, that people want to serve because of many small towns. It's increasingly difficult to find people who are willing to put their names in and to step up to the plate. And so I think that's commendable for all of the candidates. Unfortunately, we only have one position, but I appreciate the fact that you all were willing to do that and step up. I hope that you continue to be involved in the City of Guthrie and helping us move the Guthrie vision forward, and participate actively in that by getting on boards and commissions and serving in those capacities, because we need those as well, and there are lots of vacancies. So I would thank you both for, for applying, and thank you for your willingness to serve. I appreciate that. And that's all I have.
Okay. Councilman Bofford?
I echo exactly what Grant said with the candidates. You guys have been up here three times now, been through multiple interview processes, and I thank you for that. And welcome, Deanna. And then that's all I've got.
Congratulations, Vice Mayor Taylor.
Thank you. All right. I just want to thank everyone in this room. It does take everyone, and everyone who has put in their time, energy, and effort in our town. It does take an entire village, and that's what we have here. Team Guthrie does a great job, and it does take us all. Thank you to the candidates again for being willing to stand up there and give all of your answers so willingly and with all of your candor. It takes a lot to do that, and it's greatly appreciated. And please look to serve the community continuously until you get to where you want to be, if this is where you would like to sit. So I appreciate everyone, and thank you very much.
Okay. I'd like to piggyback off of what Meneka and Grant has said, and, and thank you both for, for applying and going through the process. I also want to thank everybody who applied in the last round as well and going through the process. I said this in the beginning. I echo with what they say. Anybody who's willing to serve in this community, my hat's off to them. It, it takes up a lot of time and a lot of energy away from your, your family to do this. And this is not a paid job. This is a volunteer position. All of our commissions are volunteer positions. It takes a lot of time away. So anyone who's willing to step up and serve in that capacity, I appreciate it very much. Congratulations to Councilwoman Denning. So, thank you for being on board. I'm sure you're going to do great. I'm really excited.
Thank you.
Also, congratulations to Vice Mayor Taylor. You're going to have to get used to it, and we'll get you a hat that says Vice on it.
Oh, fine. I appreciate that.
Make sure you wear it. But congratulations to you, sir.
Thank you.
And with that, that is all that I have today. But don't go anywhere. We have a second episode. It's really quick. But this will adjourn our City Council meeting, and then we will open our City of Guthrie Public Works Authority Meeting Tuesday, June 17, 2025. Item two on the agenda is the Consent Agenda, items A through D.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the Consent Agenda.
Okay.
Second question in a second.
Okay. No further comments or questions. Let's see the votes.
I'll vote three.
All right. Unanimous approval. Looky there, seven, seven dots on the, on the board again. Been a while. Item number three, items from the Consent Agenda. Any items removed? There were none. So then, item number four, we are adjourned.